Electing Jason Jonathan Jenkins. Raise your hands. Oh. Okay. That's good.
I'll send it to you right now.
First thing, Mayor Erickson, you just, Mayor Erickson, did you walk in right before that vote?
Just now.
Yeah, which, sorry, what did?
You couldn't see me.
No, I know, this on the minutes of law, who, when people came and go, were you doing introductions?
Yes, no, not introductions.
Did you hear, did you confirm the agenda?
All right, yes.
Okay, no, that's. Sorry, where Megan's not here, those are the things just, well, of course, we're trying to.
Hey, Jesse. I don't know what was going on, but I had no sound for the first four minutes, so. If you could just write down who made the motion, so I can put it in and choose there, because I don't know what's going on, sound just clicked on.
Hey, I've been, I'm like, no, I'm an idiot, I forgot to take it off mute, so.
You couldn't send me what the motions were, we're good.
Yeah, I've been trying to keep track of that, so.
Okay.
We signed, signed a paper on the way in, everybody. Wish you have a paper copy back here. If you didn't, please sign on the way out, so.
Yeah, let's pass.
I don't know. Okay. A bit of confusion here, that's okay. Let's go ahead and move on to discussion number five. This is discussion on point five, point two-five percent sales tax option. Jeff will discuss that.
Well, this might look familiar to some of you, at least on the CNPO. We've had discussions in the past about the various local options, sales tax. That the. That the legislature has made available. And some additional ones that the county is yet to enact. In the past, at least on the CNPO side. I was given sort of marching orders to work with the county. And at least explore the options, so. Sort of possibility of some future. Implementation of these. Which we did, we met with the County Road Advisory Committee. And sort of started talking about some of these options in the county council. Just for background sake. They, they come in pairs. So you can implement one, but not both of these in the columns. And the Y of Xs are the ones that have already been implemented by town. Some of them go to. Transit, the transit district. The, the third quarter is what funds the cog. The cog process. The fourth quarter was enacted a few years ago and resulted in more formula distribution to the cities. And to the county. So really, the options that are left is that second quarter. Which has the most flexibility built into it. It basically allows the county council to set. By resolution, the use of those funds. And in the past, it required voter approval. Now, it no longer does it. It allows that if you want, but it doesn't require the county council. To voter approval. This, you know, the county councils could choose. To carve off a part of this to the cog if they wanted. Or they have really maximum flexibility. How they use those, that second quarter funds. They just have to state it in a resolution and pass it. The fifth quarter. Is, which doesn't make sense, I know, having a fifth quarter, but it's a fifth quarter of one percent. That has a built-in formula, you can see there, portion of the county, portion of the city, then twenty-five percent has to go to transit. And then there's actually not a sales tax, but the county council down there in the bottom would have the option of. Implementing up to ten dollar vehicle registration fee if they want. The reason I bring this up is there's been some talk, I don't know how. Serious it is, but there's some talk of the county council. Pursuing the second quarter. Last legislative session. And I think it was mostly driven by. A particular county that had funding needs in public safety. Got a provision added to. That second order. That allows the funds to be used for public safety. I guess in the, on the broadest sense of public safety, which I assume could be. Police, fire, EMS, that sort of thing. And we've at least heard that there's some talk on the part of the county council. Of implementing that. That tax, that quarter percent, which actually in this case is point three percent. For these healthy, this public safety. And so my only reason to bring in this to your attention is just so you're aware of it. I, I mean, honestly, I would hope the county council would involve the cities in that, because it has. Impact. It would preclude our ability. Or the county's ability to do. Unless they carve out a portion of that to be used for transportation. It would, it would no longer be available as an option. I think in the past, the CNPO talked about how. We are the only county in the state. That we have more daily vehicle miles traveled happens on our. Local roads than on state roads. We're the only county in the state where that happened. So I'm not telling you anything we don't know, that's why cog has been so important, that we have a funding source that can address. Those roads, whether they be in the county or in the cities. And. It's, it's sort of why the CNPO gave me marching orders to at least start working with the county council. To explore those options in the future. So I don't know what we do with this, other than make you aware that there's some talk, I don't know. What? How they would intend to use that, or how serious the talk is. But we just got, or at least I got wind that there's some discussion of that. And wanted to make you aware.
Message, so we're all looking at how we can get more funding with the cog, because. Everything's been, kind of more expensive, and the seven million average we get. Doesn't go very far anymore, so. The biggest discussion here is, if this goes and they do it, safety. Will the cog ever get any of it? I think that's what we need to ask ourselves, and start talking to our representatives. Saying, sure, so maybe the cog can get some of this, to help improve our thoroughfares and stuff like that. Or is it all for safety? Which means they. Going safe doesn't necessarily mean they can be relatively, period, that's. So I think why we as mayor are starting to defend the ears of our representatives and say, what's your intentions here, who won in home?
I think to some degree, this, this was kind of pushed by. Some of the counties that are smaller, that don't maybe have as acute. Transportation needs as we do. And so adding more flexibility. You know, obviously, I mean, flexibility is always good, but. You know, we're, we're not in that boat, we do have significant transportation needs. And so. I think it, it's a little different for us, we're the largest. So they only allow third-class counties, third to sixth-class counties to do this. Salt Lake County, for instance, can't, can't do this. But we are the largest third-class county in the state too, so we're kind of on that higher end of the third-class county. But I guess we just want to bring your attention. If you want to discuss staff to do something, or whatever we. Can, or if you want to contact county council folks and express your opinion. I mean, there is an equity issue, I think to some degree. Where, you know, some of the cities already provide their own police and fire. And. So those citizens will bear the burden of. Over the vote.
Mayor, can I provide, can I quickly read, it's very short, the section they added? I think it might help, like, some questions, my first questions were, what exactly did it say? What did it mean? Are you all right if I just read it real quick from the third?
Yeah.
It'll take two seconds. I believe the section that was added was section B in this fifty-nine dash twelve dash twenty-two sixteen. Some sections three. In addition to the purposes described in section fifty-nine, twelve, twenty-two, twelve point two, which is the section that says what the. The original second quarter tax could be used for. A county legislative body of a county of the third through sixth class that imposes a sales tax. And use tax as authorized in this section on or after January one, twenty twenty-four. Simply says may allocate revenues to public safety purposes, that's all it says. It's not defined. And I do understand that if the county council passes this. It's a requirement, I believe, in this code, that they actually have to then submit a plan. To the state to say how they will allocate it. And then if they ever want to change that allocation, they would have to re-vote and re-submit this.
Yeah, they have to, they have to pass a resolution saying how we're going to use it.
Well, we don't know how resolutions work. Is the county working on the timeframe for passing of this?
I know a little bit about that. I'm not sure, I can't speak for the council, or even David on that question, but what I can say is. According to the state's calendars. It's too late to pass it, that you would get a full year's amount of revenues anyway. So if they pass it along with their current budget process that they're finalizing. It would come in, which is, I'm assuming would be by the end of this year, by statute. It would come into play April first. Basically, the last, you know, just not having that first quarter. And the, the state's current estimate that they gave back to us on that would be. Around, well, our, our finance director is assuming going forward, that the amount would be about nine million a year total. So if you take three-fourths of that, which is like. So around six point six is what it is. But those are just general.
But we won't know what their intention is in terms of using it until after.
They would have to pass a resolution, and as part of that resolution, it has to say. In that resolution, the allocation.
That's why I think it's important you reach out to our representatives. Mayor James.
Does this group have interest in creating sort of the letter of. You know, a letter from this body to the county council, so they. Know, I mean, again, maybe we're not all. Unified in what that would be, but that may be a valid discussion point to say.
Would you like to pursue, would the, would this council like to pursue a letter? Representing all of us back to the council, so they know where the mayors in this valley stand.
I think that's great, I think we should, I mean, that actually carries some weight with the county council members. And so the question is, does this body feel like they really should be. Restricted to transportation funding? Again, multiple cities, as Jeff mentioned, do already pay for. Police and fire service.
So as luck would have it. We kind of anticipated it might be. A desire for this.
He did not plan, he didn't plan.
This is just.
Mayor Doggo's smiling, but was he part of that plan?
This was just a stab at a, a first draft. And, and I really just asked that we, the cog gets included in the process. You could. You could change it or suggest others, but I thought it'd be good, at least have a start of a letter. That we could wordsmith if you don't have to go back to reference. And I hope I didn't overly presume, but.
We were talking about a, a tax that hasn't been implemented, that they're going to.
And undefined, I don't like the word undefined at all.
Well, and they have to define it in part of the resolution, but. Again, I mean, nine million dollars, again, as you said, seven million goes pretty quickly these days. And if they even took half of that, it really erodes and. I mean, public safety is expensive too, but that wasn't the primary initial. Reason this tax was authorized by the legislature, I mean, they did.
I think the motive is, I understand, Iron County was having struggles with funding the jail. And, and they were kind of the primary motive.
So even calling jail public safety, not even like police officers that are out on.
I think it's the broadest, there's no definition of what public safety is in the code. But I think it would be the broadest interpretation.
We'll just step away from the canvas, we've passed out right now, if you can let me know of any. Suggestions you want made to this, who are likely presented here.
And I put some presumptive language in there, and the cog was all supportive, I don't mean this. So if everyone's not supportive, we can change it, I just.
Well, you're not supporting, you're giving us a starting point.
Yeah, I'm just giving you a starting point, so don't take too much stock there, you can reword it. I just felt that it's harder to start from scratch.
I would say shorter with bullet points. With our. I think I would go with, they already know what the tax is. And so if we just put on there, really mostly how we feel as mayors to. Implement this tax, and then take half of it for something else. When we've got such a neat county line. Maybe we need to schedule like another Zoom meeting, just like a twenty-minute, you know, everybody. Send comments to Jeff, do a revise.
Our board would like to do that, we can do that.
And then do a, a public meeting, just to provide.
You want to do a follow-up Zoom to discuss this, totally.
Let's do it, I don't, I don't think tonight's the night.
Right. But that's, we need to get it out here to get us a look in and talk.
Yeah, I mean, it needs to go quickly, there's.
We have another, let everybody take this, make whatever changes they want.
Yeah, so.
Please in my mind, we don't want to. And we'll have a Zoom meeting to. Sign off on it.
Oh, you said June? You did say June. When's this meeting supposed to be? Pardon me?
Yeah, I mean, the county's going to pass their budget in November, it's in next month, so.
He said Zoom, not June. I thought you said June, I thought, that makes no sense. So let's. Anybody, all in favor of pulling the Zoom meeting, follow-up Zoom meeting to discuss this part, this item. Call in favor, say aye.
I, I.
Favor of that. Any calls?
Can you send an electronic copy?
Yeah, rewrite it, send us a copy. Okay, so let's. For this item, let's go ahead and do that, we'll, we'll, we'll follow up Zoom. We won't have meetings to Zoom. And I'll have Jeff schedule a date for us, okay?
So mayor, it wouldn't be any harm if individual mayors want to shoot an email or something.
Nope.
It might be good just to let them know.
So you have a draft.
Concern here on the part of individual layers, and then you can follow it up.
We probably shouldn't copy everybody, or then it becomes a meeting, but if we provide individual comments to Jeff, then we're.
Or, or directly to county care, I think you could do that, just send an email to county council member.
But we're working on our letter.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So when you say contact your representative, you're not talking about our legislative, you're talking about the county.
I'm talking, county council. Okay. Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, next on our agenda is to consider the approval, we know that.
There's not Larry. Here, Dave. That paradise.
Larry, who's on the phone? Paradise? Larry Johnson?
I'm here.
Okay. Larry Johnson's on the phone, Paradise. Okay. Next, we have the last meeting, we talked about. A change to our bylaw amendment, Jesse, would you go ahead and handle that?
Yeah, so again, this was discussed last time, because we required. To give two-week written notice, and then again, we need not only a half, but a two-thirds majority vote of the cog to approve. The change to the amendment, or to the bylaws. Again, a lot of this was just coming into realigning the policy changes that we'd made. Last year, I don't know if we want to go through those again, or if I'm being for. An approval of those. Other than as the changes are noted.
I move approval of the changes as noted in the draft.
And also good luck.
We have a motion in second, on favor.
Wait, discussion, please. Oh, thanks, ask general consent to allow staff to correct grammatical errors. Including six dot A dash two, not dash three, sorry. To change oversee the data drive storing process to data-driven storing process.
Thank you.
So that's general consent, if nobody objects with this.
Thank you. Okay. Have motion in second, which I assume will need the change of recognized by. Gately Mayor Jacobson. All in favor?
Aye.
Me and Bo. Now, she's United, I'm just a champion. Okay. Next, what everybody's here for is the funding recommendations for twenty twenty-four. I'd like to give Mayor Peterson a chance to make some recommendations, I've been talking quite a bit on this, and. I think she might have some solution for it on our. Problem.
Yeah, so I think we, we kind of talked about this in the last meeting, that. What North Logan was proposing is kind of a whole different class of project, so. I'm sympathetic to the position that I put you in, I hope you're also sympathetic to the position that I'm in, where I'm having to advocate for a project that isn't a North Logan project, for all intents and purposes. It's a project that is a regional transportation issue. That has been reached down the road, I think since the nineties, since we've been trying to figure out Main Street, and I think. A big part of that is the adjacent roads next to Main Street. So while I am sympathetic to the position that I put you in, in this, with this project. I mean, it's also illustrates the point that it is something that we can't afford not to address. So to that end. Couple proposals, one, and since our last meeting, I've spoken at length with Senator Wilson about garnering some support from him. Specifically with talking to UDOT about really stepping up about some regional transportation funding. I think that that's the more appropriate source of this, and in fact, I think how this cog voting process. Happened really underscores that, that, that we're, we acknowledge that this is a. This is an issue that needs to be addressed, but maybe this isn't the source of funding that we should use for it. So my proposal is that on our twelve. East thirty-one hundred north roundabout, that's a project that we can save. Money on if we do it alongside Cache County on their twelve-lease widening reconstruction project. So my proposal is that we withdraw the roundabout project. And, and get a gentleman and gentlewoman agreement from all of you. That we fund that alongside Cache County's project next year. And my proposal is that we use that one point oh five eight million to fund Wellsville Cities project. Millville Cities project, Providence Cities project. And then there's an excess or a remainder of a hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-eight. That we put that in the two hundred East roadway widening fund. So then we've, we funded everything except for the county's and North Logan Cities roundabout. And we also preserve some of that funding. To hedge against whatever we can get from other sources. Ideally, that, that will be the entirety of two hundred East. I also drafted a joint letter to UDOT, because it's the cool thing to do, right, Jeff? From this body that you guys are, I'd love to have you guys take a look at and indicate your willingness to sign it. Where it says, basically, this is a regional problem. And it's a, it's a Main Street adjacent problem, and we need UDOT to step up because individuals, it's not fair for individual cities to. To do, so. UDOT has indicated in the past that, that they'd be willing to consider throwing money towards. Main Street adjacent projects, I've listed a few of those. You'll see that in that list, many of those are planned in Logan's lap. And I think unfairly, I, I think that. They have the unfortunate position of being in the center of the valley and. Being faced with some really expensive fixes to what is really a countywide problem. So I can send that to you, I have a meeting with Senator Wilson and UDOT and Logan City on Wednesday, where I would love to present that letter. With whoever would like to sign it, I can send that out to you electronically right now. But anyway, that's my proposal, that we withdraw the roundabout, fund the Millville, Providence, Wellsville. Projects and, and carry over the two hundreds to the next year.
The rural set aside.
Yeah, the rural set aside.
The rural set aside is pretty much funded, and that one's, well, that's locked in.
And Logan actually had a similar idea, again, we, our idea, and I'll just pass these around for just more food for thought. Because, again, it made sense to try, they were all great projects. And those medium-sized cities just never get funded. Or very seldom, just because of the way the projects. Or very seldom, just because of the way the projects are ranked. Again, our idea, you know, we didn't know you would withdraw the roundabout project, our idea was to fund that. And then portion of the county project, just so everybody got some funding and then we agreed to address two hundred east project next year, so.
Yeah, I think the difference between the two proposals is that. I think I'm volunteering something from my projects, and I think it's a little bit different when you're volunteering North Logan.
Yeah, exactly, so we didn't know you had that suggestion in.
Mr. Chair, I think, I think we had a motion, I'd like to second that so we can have discussion.
Oh, like you're. I mean, I, I think we're discussing, I'm biased.
I'm sorry. So, are you ready to have some discussion?
What was that?
Are you ready to have some discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Jacobson?
No, I, I, I just wanted to make sure we had a second before we dive into the discussion, if there was a motion, but I misheard.
I just hope we, last time we had to undo it, I hope we don't do that again this time.
Right, I, I mean, yeah, motion, second, discussion, vote.
I mean, uh, can you, I, do you.
I don't have anything else, Doc.
I will make that motion, as I stated, I'll make that motion.
That's contingent on all those things that you've stated.
Um, not the letter, I, I think that that's.
You're talking, you're speaking about.
Want us to collaborate with the county next year?
No, we have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and I have a second, but now we can talk about it. Now you can talk about it. Can we see the numbers actually?
If you give me half a second, I can pull it up and we can manipulate that.
It's, um, yeah, sure.
I mean, I, I know what you're saying. I appreciate what, you know, Mayor Peterson and I have talked a lot on this, she's struggled with it tremendously because they know what the need is. Both her and Mayor Cox are reaching out to Senator Wilson and saying, look, this is not. A cog issue, this is a, a true affair issue, that we need some additional help with. So both of them are reaching out and trying to get additional state help, we just don't know where that's gonna fall right. And she's willing to say, okay, let's do this, I'll figure it out, and next year. If, they're not gonna help us, then I'm gonna have to come back to the second, second east, but we all know that second east is a problem. So.
But we didn't create the highway that goes down the mountain.
No.
Of our town, and UDOT really should be helping us with that.
But as stated earlier, you know, Jeff says that, uh. We have most, most community owned roads that are driven. Versus the other side of the valley has the, the UDOT roads, well, that's right, they have UDOT roads, we don't. Therefore, they get tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars. That doesn't make our transportation issue go away. That, we have transportation issues and it's not limited to a Nibley or province, it's. Cars know no boundaries, they don't know when they're going from one co- community to another. We have a north-south transportation issue. And so that's one of the things that I've been trying to. Get Senator Wilson to try and see if he would help lead a. Long-term endeavor to get us some funding for this side of the valley. Or this side of the mountains for some of that fund out, because we've, we've been grossly. Overlooked. It always goes, you know, St. George has a beautiful road on the south end of their valley, it's a great road, it'll be great in the future. On the south end of St. George. It, a lot of you have driven it, have driven it all by yourself, it's a great visionary road. We have roads that are jam packed ten years ago. But because they are. Not UDOT roads. It, it, it becomes a congestion issue, becomes a transportation issue. Thus the value of Mayor Peterson's letter to let Senator Wilson know that we need to change, there needs to be a change. We need to start sensing like the dog hunting, help develop our thoroughfares here. You can't expect us to do that with just seven million dollars. We'll continue to get farther and farther behind, we've been nickel and diming it for. Gosh, Ed, since you and I were in here fifteen, twenty years ago, we've been nickel and diming it, continuing to get farther behind, but just doing what we can. And, and we'll continue to do that, but we're not going to get ahead, we're not gonna get even caught up. You know, just putting Band-Aids on something.
In your initial conversations with the Senator, what is your sense, what is your feel of his sensitivity, of his interest in. Working towards something there?
On the short term, with moving the UDOT money, that has been. Even UDOT was receptive of that.
Yeah, so I can speak to that, cause I spoke to him probably most recently, he was very supportive, the conversation couldn't have gone better. Um, I think he understands that, that we're trying to do the best we can with what we have. But we really just have some raw, like bigger issues than COG can really, uh, adequately address. But as Brian mentioned, they, they said in a meeting with us, UDOT did, that they'd be willing to address some of the. Um, some of the adjacent, um, to Main Street issues. Um, in, in pursuit of making a Main Street, solving the Main Street problem.
So those two need to marry.
That, that's the, that's the short term, but then I wanna look at that strategic longer, you know, it's, it's not gonna be a. A five million dollar fix, it's gonna be, you know, five million for ten years, we need something to try and help us. To, to get this transportation issue resolved.
That's in addition to COG.
That's in addition to, it's in addition to the bypass route, it's, we just got transportation issues. Mayor Daines and then Mayor Jacobson.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, as part of the Main Street study that where, you know, we thought we'd have results from my office, I mean, they've indicated to us in the preliminary meeting, but. UDOT is willing to put money into, you know, roadways off of Main Street because that's kind of the only solution. So I, I think they, you know, they've said they're gonna move in that direction, but then, you know, we have to get it.
Yeah, we gotta move the ball some.
Jesse, I sent you that, I sent it to everyone, but I sent you the draft letter that I have, and it outlined several examples of. Of things that the consultant, like several, um. Several off Main Street projects that they were considering. Um, and so I've just listed those out as examples, you know, I'm far be it from me to tie their hands on which ones they prioritize, but. Um, but I think that maybe just gives you an idea.
So with, with that Logan Main Street project, they, they did explore a whole bunch of different often in street alternatives. And some of you were probably involved in that. They, they have sort of zeroed in on a set of recommendations. They're not set in stone, and I don't know if that's part of these mayor or, yeah. Yeah, so some of these are there.
Um, can I get Mayor Jacobson?
Uh, the mayors and Jeff have made the point that I was ready to make, so that'd be the same thing.
Um, just like, just point of order with this, if, if I can get, i- if you guys can kind of speak this. Cause if I can walk into that meeting with some or all of you in support of this, I think it really packs a punch with UDOT. So that's just my plug for kind of fast forwarding this into chat.
So that means individually as mayors, are you willing to sign the letter that you're going to? Right?
I, I haven't signed everyone individually yet.
Do you want to forward that later, that all of this?
I have.
It's right here, is that the letter right there?
This is the letter, so. And then this.
Yeah.
This is that how the number to fall per. The motion that's being considered. The funding of Wellsville, Millville and Providence, then again, another hundred and sixty five thousand rolling back to North Logan's two hundred east.
So in essence, what we're doing is a cog board right now, we're saying, okay, we went through the voting process. Uh, we know where it landed. Uh, Mayor Peterson, Mayor Cox and others, Mary, the Haines have looked at it and tried to provide some solutions. Help us get a little bit more bang for our buck. Uh, and with what Mayor Peterson's saying is, this is the bang for the buck, the cog. Has the right and the authority to say, given what the voting was, we're willing to accept this instead. Another mayors to make that decision.
But I would agree with you on that, um, but I would just encourage, if we do this. Let's maybe augment the record with a little, we're supposed to include reasons why, and there's, you could say timing issues or. For whatever reason, but we oughta probably, the state code says that you can. Do this, what you're suggesting, we just need to document in a public meeting as to why.
I think she gave the rationale and.
Okay.
So the discussion, I think. Okay, just, just one second, Mayor Daines, okay, here Jeff, here's what I was gonna say, basically, the rationale is. Mayor Peterson stated that, we, she believes the roundabout could be funded later with Cash County because they would exercise some synergies. When they put those together, therefore she had reckon, recommending to pull that out of what most people voted for. And instead, fund those other ones, and they fund that later on.
Okay, I mean, that's fine, the other one is we've skipped Cash County and funded other urban areas. So I guess that's just the priority of tying those together.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, Mayor Daines.
That was my question, I thought Lindsey had said we would sort of fund Cash County. And then combine the roundabout with that, maybe you can explain just a little bit more how you see the funding going for that?
So my thought process was, Cash County doesn't get funded this year, if things stay as they were. And so my thought was, in an effort to reduce the overall cost of both the twelve east widening. And the thirty one hundred north twelve east roundabout, that we do that next year. My understanding is that we as a group have never officially tied the hands of the COG for the future. So my proposal is, uh, just a handshake that, hey. In acknowledgement of what we're trying to do this year, that you, that you give us the nod next year.
So. And do we have any, I mean, from the county's perspective, do you think there actually can be significant cost savings? I mean, we know how much, how expensive everything is, and by combining the two, will that indeed save some?
My staff says half a million, round about there. But I don't know, and I would love to hear your input on that.
Mayor Jacobson?
I may or may not have. Next, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So help me understand, the numbers presented, one million and three point three million. Is that with synergy or without?
That's current this year with laws.
Without synergy.
I would love to have Matt speak to it, cause I'm kind of throwing this at him.
Well, I guess my question would be, if we did, then fund the Cash County project, which is kind of a. North Logan, you know, county project and William Beck's. High Park as well, cause that's kind of the road that all those can do in the state. Would we be putting money back in that's not funded, or will that money just sit in the unfunded part? Cause for us, the only thing that would make sense that would hurt us to save money. Was maybe some money would help for us to go purchase some right away now, on the cost before the cost is, is explained it. Which is, but I do agree, there would be money savings if we did those two projects together, but if we were gonna put. I think in our estimate, we had like four hundred thousand ish, it would be nice to go purchase some right away, so that when we did come back next year. We could move forward a little faster. Other than that, I'm, I don't have any issues to mind those projects for next year, it's really a benefit for High Park and Northern.
Mayor Daines?
And, and I'm supportive of Mayor Peterson's idea to go to UDOT, and I think that's a great idea. Again, this alternate proposal would actually allow us to go forward with the roundabout, put some toward the Cash County project. And fund, still fund all the other projects, get that, well, Logan to at least get the roundabout done. And again, I mean, maybe you can work with Cash County and create some savings, so, you know, the additional eight hundred eighty six thousand that could be. Allocated to the county. Um, could at least. Get a portion of that done, and then you're essentially funding, if the two hundred east roadway widening project is pulled out. Which is the big one, because we're trying to approach UDOT, then it does fund in order all the other projects. That, you know, according to their ranking.
Yeah, I guess where I am with it is that I'm unwilling to abandon two hundred east. Because I think that we need to have some commitment to doing two hundred east.
And that was part of my proposal was that we do need to, because again, all of these projects are important, and if we are pulling them out annually. Or for one year, we should have a handshake, and again, we can't bind future groups, but. And we did that with Nibley's various spaces, we said, you know, we'll, we'll get to it, um, and I'd certainly be willing to support. Funding that next year if we don't get any UDOT funding, and maybe it does take. A good chunk next year, you know, half of the funding or whatever, and then they can have it.
Suppose we give Cash County the four hundred thousand and just. North Logan, you're willing to take two point four.
Well, I guess what I'm wondering with this is that, is like. Look, I'm trying to come to the table and I'm trying to say, here's what we can do. And I feel like I'm doing it in the name of doing a project that benefits everyone, okay, so. Uh, that is, that has been the biggest obstacle here, is that this feels like I'm arguing for a project for North Logan only. And so I have, we have said, look, we'll withdraw the roundabout. Look, if, if you guys want to allocate the one point oh five million differently, and if you want to choose someone else. I don't feel like it's fair to say, hey, North Logan, why don't you absorb a hundred percent of funding these other projects? And I'm not unwilling to about, to abandon two hundred east. I just am, because unless you can come up with a way where we are guaranteed. The funding that we may or may not get from UDOT, then I'm just doing it on a prayer.
I know, we do have to do it first, you know.
And when you say Nibley's done that, that's kind of true, but Nibley also opted to hang on to the money that they were allocated for a year. Until they got the remainder, so I, I just, I feel like what I presented is. The Goldilocks version of, it, it's a little bit painful for North Logan, it still. Keeps two hundred east a priority, and it funds some of the other projects. We can talk about the four hundred east stuff, but. Sorry, the, we can talk about the four hundred thousand for the county.
Right, I just, if there was that, there, there was a portion of the time, but they did. All this, well, I'm looking at one for Logan and I'm kind of looking at some for the like Logan, but for one for Logan, there seem like eight hundred thousand is probably. You know, more money than we, than you provided, which we didn't select.
Okay, plus Mayor, I was gonna, let's call for a vote. There was a motion and a second, we discussed it. Now, there needs to be further discussion, but the vote on the table was to accept her Lindsey's proposal and not add on other proposals, so I think we had to call for a vote.
Is everyone clear as represented on the screen?
Yeah, thanks for the number of questions. Mayor?
Let me just ask this question, you know, suppose you go to, to UDOT and UDOT says, yeah, we can put that in our budget. Can't we come back to this meeting in reality?
And to me, the top of the project list in that situation would be county and the roundabout.
Right.
So.
So there's the flexibility to reallocate, if we can get more money, that, that's. That really is an incentive for all of us to be calling UDOT and, and talking with. Everyone about the fact that we've got an issue here in Cash County. It's not a secret, because all over the state, they know how, how bad it is to get new Main Street.
So if my, my car project comes to an end in spring, on seven hundred east. I'm anticipating. Having excess funds. With this car then reconvene and reallocate those funds to the county.
If I can, the cal, the work, this body's allowed me one recommendation to the county council.
Well.
Per calendar year.
Right.
So, again, so kind of in that, in. But then that would take away our November, so again, typically that's been done in November, so in the instance, Mayor Cox, if you have money that falls back. Then we document that and it goes out in next year's awards, but that, whatever kind of gets approved here. We usually go to county council tomorrow, due to some changes in policy, it's gonna be a couple of weeks till we go to county council for their final approval. Of this recommendation, but then we're kind of off till we come back again in a year to make that. We're kind of playing with the game, again, now where we have a contingency fund where the county has allocated those funds in a reserve. They can be used to go to projects to come in over budget and stuff like that. And stuff like that. And that's how we've seen the other counties have done it. And so we're kind of following that suit, but they. They come in after and we'll start making big tweaks or. It's going to be more difficult.
Just one other quick comment. One advantage to this, if we do leave seven to two hundred east project, if UDOT. Isn't willing to fund the entire project, but might fund part of it, it could be used for a match. I mean, again, it would be ideal to get the whole thing. Right, so I mean, I I can certainly buy that or.
And this is too, if you know it's not as as willing, then again, Mayor Peterson needs to come back next year. She's back for a smaller portion of this. Pie versus.
Thumb in the veins.
Some of it's.
Okay. I think we've got enough discussion on it. So I guess the motion is.
One more point. Now that I like to argue with Lindsay. There's more to it than Nibley keeping the money that they were allocated one year. One year we gave it back and one year we can't.
Yeah, I'm just saying like.
I'm fine.
I'm just saying. No, you can't stop me down. You 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 can't go back and forth without rebuttals. I'm just saying there's precedent for both. And so to kind of lean on North Logan to not only give up. That project, but also, hey. Take our pinky promise that we'll take care of you next year. I I I firmly believe that next year we will have more projects than we have money for, even though it's gonna be a big year. And I think we all should wrap our heads around that. There's never gonna be a year where we have more money than we know it to.
Okay. One more comment.
He gave it to me. I get it. He gave it to me. Having done this a lot of years, Brian, you and I have seen this. I think this is. A great proposal, a wonderful olive branch put out. Brian, some of us, uh, Tom, some of us that have been here for years, we've seen this happen and work. And it's important to remember. Hey, we need to look at this next year. Now here's some. Handshake promises that we've made that make sense that are good. This is how we work together and make things. Is it perfect? No, but this is really good. I think this is really good and I think it's a great proposal by Mayor Peterson and and. It's us working together and that's what it's about.
I can make it more perfect. I'm trying to understand, Lindsay, is this on the thing you are proposing?
Yeah.
And. Is there any way we could get? Four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars from. As well. Or from the uh. Two hundred east and put it in the county side so that we can go out. That's a substantive motion that I'd like to make.
I guess I'm just saying that's been proposed and what I've said is take it from. Like we've given out one point oh five million. And so, you know, does Providence want to throw in theirs?
Okay.
You know, I I just, I I'm not, I'm not saying. That those are all equal, but we have the C M P O excess. Like.
So this one was not your proposal. That was.
That's Logan's.
That's Logan's, yeah.
And then this, yeah, so this reflects what Mayor.
This is the proposal.
That's the motion on the board.
Could it be appropriate to to? Accept this and make a recommendation of any projects that complete. In this coming. Calendar year. That come in under budget that the reserve account. Up to a certain dollar value go to the county.
I'll have an answer.
Yeah, depends on how much I can remember. How much is our current?
No, 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 I'm I'm just saying I'm giving them in under.
So again, I get, I think that's something maybe we could look at in the future. I think that's hard to do at this point in the. In the ground and in the cycle, but I think that's something we could.
Firstly.
It's on the same road. Can I extend?
That 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 extension would be too far. Yeah, so.
We've got. We've we've addressed this. I'm gonna call for a vote. This is what Lindsay has proposed. We're gonna recommend change. We understand what the changes are. We've got this criteria that. Our staff needs, so all was in favor. Uh, accepting this proposal as is and displayed on the screen. Please say aye. Any opposed?
Name.
Okay. One one opposed, name. You know what, folks, thanks. I appreciate what we've done today. This isn't easy. We knew we had a hard task, but I sure appreciate those that stepped up and tried to solve the problem. Mayor Bailey.
First of all, I appreciate Lindsay. Because these three projects, these three small projects, but we never got funded. Without uh doing something. And the problem I see in most of the projects, us little rural towns that have spark projects. You know, we don't have a. Main highway that I'm into. But yet we have small projects that really for safety reasons needs to be addressed. But uh. I hate to say this, but the county is growing. Every city in this county is growing. And things are gonna change. As far as transportation and everything else. And I tell you, if all we're getting is seven million or sixteen million a year. That's not even good attention.
No, and that's. Add to that if you don't mind. That's I started talking with Jesse and Jeff about this. That's why we came up looking at the this sales tag deal. We're looking at that. Governor or Mayor Cox, Mayor Peterson have both talked to me several times. What about reaching out to our state representatives? They've been willing to do it and stepped up and done it. The cog as a whole has come out and they're reaching for solutions. And we need to all to do that. Because no, seven point nine million dollars is not gonna cut it at all in the future.
And I just say I've I've also spoken with the where it's um. Blake Moore is. And. There's money available, there's federal money available. But. Mike Lee will not use any kind of. He has access to a ton of money that is just going to other states. And he will not access those for intel. Which I think is is terrible. Yeah, because he's making a point about the budget. About the federal budget. He doesn't want to add to it. Well, I understand that, but it's already. It's already allocated and they're not gonna unallocate it just because he doesn't use it. So there is money available. And so if you have an opportunity to speak with his office or his staff. Let them know that you're unhappy as a city because. We could use those dollars here in the valley to take care of some of these things, but he will not. He will not access it. Um. Representative Moore doesn't have access to those. But. The senators do.
Well, Mayor Danes, Mayor Peterson, thank you for searching this out, talking to our staff and getting answers. I appreciate it. And thank everybody for taking your time. I know we didn't find anything for the county yet, but we will. But so. We the motion's been approved. It will go forward with the funding as outlined here on the screen. That's what I will present to the county council. Uh, next on our.
Is that on an agenda yet? Do we have a date?
That's the next bullet item. So. Again, significantly turned around and put taken that. Tomorrow night to council. The council needs twenty-four hours to have that posted publicly. To vote on that. So that pushes us. Two weeks from tomorrow. On that council meeting, there's two public hearings. And the tax. County property tax increase. And once we go out of. We 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 don't make it by six, then we could get bumped and it could be ten o'clock at night. So the same as.
Be first on the agenda, not last.
Again, I think at that point, we're so we're proposing the twenty-sixth of November would be when we go to council. So that we're not having to get, if you don't make the six stop deadline and they break for property tax public hearing, then we could be. Who knows? So.
We need to show up.
We've you we've usually invited whoever would like to come. Again, usually we have a show on those that are funded, those that are funded and kind of show support of. Of the cog and the step and the process as it goes to the county council. So. Again, I'll be, so that's in four weeks. That's almost in four weeks from now. So. So I but I I can send everyone an invite, letting them know when that is. So.
You're more welcome to come.
Yeah, we usually have a number of mayors or city staff that come to support that.
I've seen Holly there. Peterson, Mayor Cox, been there.
Awesome.
They're always been there.
Yeah, it's been thanksgiving week.
Again, it's just hard with that change and timing of those type of things that we can't always control. Kind of just pushes us farther back. The other thing that we need to, there'll be one more fourth county meeting again, kind of to elect a new chair for going into the following year. And then again, we'll probably start, I think at this point, we can start collecting comments. If there's proposed changes to the policy manual. Again, this year we went through a really big lift, I think for the most part. It played out well. I'm sure there's still improvements that can be made. So. Again, now that we're gonna prove this process, we're waiting for our comments or discussion. Feel free to send those our way and we can start looking at those. And then again, we'll have one more meeting. And then we'll go to the county council on the twenty sixth of November. So I will send everyone out email at that day and.
And there's this meeting we discussed to finalize the letter, the sales tax and.
So there'll be another Zoom meeting invited.
We could do that as a quick Zoom or if you, if you decide you want to do it despite, another way to do it is you could just send comments. And give mayor dogma discretion. To kind of. Uh. Incorporate those and sign the letter. If you want to do it that way, you wouldn't need to necessarily have a meeting. Uh, you wanna just grant him that discretion. Or we could have a quick Zoom. I'm not trying to get out of the meeting.
I think maybe granting him the discretion is a great idea.
I like the idea of getting out of a meeting.
I mean, if we just got the letter and sign, intentionally sign a letter.
I think it needs to be an MOA, something that's gonna hold. Some sort of standing. A letter is, you know. A letter, something that's gonna have. That we want them to enter into an MOA with us of.
I don't see.
A commitment that they're not going to. The council.
We have any leverage to that.
Yeah, the the council's where you're gonna have that authority to.
They have not asking for leverage. We're asking them to do the right thing. Not asking for leverage.
Well, if Mayor Hidalgo drafts the letter, if anyone wants to opt out, then they should contact him and say, I don't want my letter, other what, you know.
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's do it.
Great. Again, thank you very much. This would be very pleasurable to stand before the council and explain what you're doing this every year.
I think that's we should know that it's only six oh three. That's pretty good.
Uh, I might have missed the memo, but I noticed a change in Jesse Ma's signature. And C P E at the end of his name. If that's the case, if you have not previously been a P E and now a licensed professional engineer offered. On behalf of our sincere graduates.
Leave it to an engineer to know this.
Give yourself all a hand in what you've done. I appreciate what you've done.
Well, Lindsay, thank you.
You actually work together. I can't emphasize. That's that's the key to this and that's what I enjoy about the program.